Order. And I'll get it in the right order this time, so I'll do roll call first. Eric Brown.
Randy Pelletier.
Kristy Wood.
Judith Landry.
David Latchell.
Matt Chizokis.
Ann Pierce.
Jason Henry.
Heidi Duford.
Doreen Wittenberg.
Lauren Ferruccio.
Eliza Trulli.
Mike Colan.
Jude Durney.
And now, if I can ask everybody, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is the agenda review.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, too fast. I need to add some.
Well, no, there's the first and second, then we'll add.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sorry.
Now for discussion.
I have a discussion.
Boy, you were so excited.
I was nervous here. Okay. Two action items to add. A music department grant to accept and the FY27 Prospect Mountain proposed budget. And I have an informational item, open enrollment payment.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Any other things that you had? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Next up is approval minutes of public and non-public meeting minutes of October 21st, 25th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 21st regular board meeting and the non-public.
Second.
Do we need to seal the October 21st?
I think we did.
We did. Okay, we'll make sure. Any other corrections or concerns? Seeing none hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No questions?
I abstained.
One abstention? Okay. Next up on the agenda is public input. I ask you on the public input, come to the mic, state your name, where you're from, and come on. He's all closed public input. School board, does anybody on the school board have something they need to announce or say? Okay. Now, hey, you got the show now.
The informational item, we have good news, open enrollment, I received a payment, our first one today on the invoice from Governor Whitworth, regional school district, so.
How much was that?
It was worth thirty-eight thousand and some change.
Nice. It's a start.
Two student years in their case. So, right now, we have districts that owe what is best described as student years for both the 23-24 year and the 24-25 year. So, in Governor Whitworth's case, it was a total of two.
Awesome.
And the finance, if anybody has any questions? We're looking okay. I know special ed, we have still some open positions, so there is a big balance there still.
Anybody have questions for finance? Next up, Principal Latchell.
Should be pretty straightforward this week. I made it a point to add several links. I know you have a paper copy, so if anyone is interested in watching those tech tips from our wonderful librarian or the latest timoral talk that Mr. Papacino facilitates, I'm happy to share those with you. Recent update shared with all parents is copied in there. As usual, everything good news related is part of our monthly good news assemblies. And then, at the very end, a screenshot of how the PMHS administration is just capturing data specifically related to the types of communications and interventions teachers are doing for those struggling learners. So, hopefully, we'll have some really good intel and information related to that once that's completed. Happy to entertain. Any questions?
Any questions, the principal? Nope. Fine, thank you very much. Next up, buildings and ground report. Anybody have any questions? Sorry?
Nope, looks like they weren't taken care of. Needs to be taken care of.
You had a committee meeting. Nope. Yeah, we did have a committee meeting, did you want to talk committee meeting at all? Nope. Fantastic. All right, it's building and ground.
Everyone's doing great.
Love it.
Next up, student representative, Jude.
So, not too much to report on this month, especially since we're kind of in that bridge period between fall and winter sports. The sports banquet happened on November 12th, and that was quite a good event, there was a good turnout there. And the music department held a concert on November 4th, so that was for CPL, which is Contemporary Performance Lab. So, Mr. Stevens kind of has a sort of like rock band kind of amongst students, that's the best way I would describe it. And so, that's a good creative opportunity for a lot of students here. And it went very well, and that was pretty well attended. And NHS had their induction ceremony just last week.
Bless you.
And it went well. And another thing I wanted to point out was trick or treat night, so that happened last month. But, there was over 150 kids who attended. It was a very well-attended event. I wasn't expecting that many kids to come, I can definitely say, so I think that went very well, and that's something that should be highlighted.
That's great. Any questions?
I'll just add, you guys did a great job with that event. And then, I don't have a child that is in CPL or jazz band, but I did attend because I knew some other kids that were going to be there that we wanted to support. And I just want to say kudos to Mr. Stevens and that program. If anyone has the opportunity to go to their next show, these kids have so much fun and their confidence on that stage, and it's great. They play fun songs, like.
You're actually like Bach or whatever.
Great job to those students that get up there, and it's a lot of courage to get up there on stage and perform in front of an audience, and they did a great job.
There's just so much like talent in our school.
There's so much talent in this school, I'm so proud of those kids.
And I can get really shy, it's like in CPL because with band and chorus, like, it's kind of a group, like, band is just instrumentalists.
More structured a bit, yeah.
Chorus is like just vocalist, but with CPL, it's like combining both.
Yeah.
And, you know, a lot of students that don't even do band or chorus do CPL, and I just think it's great to watch all of them come together.
It's a great opportunity. Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned it. Thank you.
Yeah, the Battle of the Bay robotics competition took place the first weekend of the month. It's always great. There are, I know everyone likes a quick meeting. There's a lot of great stuff going on. There's a PAC activity where some students are getting their tractor operator certificate in New Hampshire. If you live on a family farm and you're a member of that family, you're allowed to operate a tractor, but as a teenager, you can't be employed and operate a tractor without this certification that's being offered here at the school. There are 15 students taking hunter safety here. It filled up in a day, so I think the second session is already being planned. The day after the Battle of the Bay robotics competition was the Second Annual Girls Behind the Glass, all-female robot drive teams. We think the only one east of the Mississippi, the only competition of that kind. There's some really cool stuff on the front page of the Baysider. Last week, there's a story about the How Stuff Works class that's going on here. There's an awful lot of good stuff happening. Thank you, Jude.
That's great. Thank you.
There were 32 schools represented at the Battle of the Bay, and we hear an enormous amount of positivity about Prospect Mountain from those teams. It's an incredible event.
I've gone to past the board and watched them, it's amazing.
Yeah.
Next up, Sub-Tense Report, Matt. Oh, oh, techno, technology. Right, technology report. Watch those technologies. Any questions or concerns about technology?
No concerns.
Thank you. Now, it's just a Sub-Tense, so I believe we're going into some stuff.
Yep. So, at the last board meeting, you had asked for a couple of different things. One was sort of the update on embedded honors. The other action item you had asked for is around interventions for reading and math, and I think when you looked at David's spreadsheet there, that's part of the collection process. The hope for that is to find out what teachers are doing with students, where the struggles lie, and then from there, we'll be able to use that data to figure out what kind of supports we can offer as we move forward with this. We just finished our first quarter with the embedded honors and sort of engaged in that teaching and learning process. With that transition, all of our courses for our ninth grade really focused in on that standards-based model. Along those lines, we had a couple of our departments who have adopted some new curriculum, both specifically in our math and science departments with Open Up Math and Open Up Sci Ed. And so, when you do that, having a new program, it takes time for the teacher to truly understand how it works, and our departments are doing a great job in kind of working through that. I had an opportunity to meet with the department heads to have a conversation about where they're at and get some feedback as a whole, and those are on there. I think when you look through there, one of the things that stands out is that, you know, there were some frustrations at the beginning of the year, but those are starting to work themselves out, and people are starting to hit their strides as the first quarter ends. People are feeling, as a department, a lot better about this transition. In one case, in social studies, the citizenship course, the comment was it's going much better than expected. So, again, we're seeing positive pieces there. We'll continue to provide support, both through whether it be individual teachers or departments, meeting with Ally. Dean Lee is here tonight as well, so she's doing a lot of work inside the classes to help support them along this process. Last year, if you remember, around this time, we did a survey of our ninth grade students to kind of, a variety of questions that we asked them both as individuals but also as small groups. And so, at this time, I'd like to introduce Dean Lee, who was one of the individuals who conducted some of that survey work, and she'll explain what some of the information and where our next steps are on that, so.
Yikes. Thank you. So, we do two things in this regard, hang on one second. Nope. We do two things in this regard. We survey students via a Google form. So, eighty-seven percent of our freshmen took the survey. Then, we also do focus groups, and those two work in conjunction with each other. So, the focus groups ask kids questions specifically about classes that they're taking, what helps them stay engaged, what feels disengaging for them. Where the survey focus is more on how do they feel about it, what brings them joy, what frustrates them here. And so, when we gather all that data, we put it together and see if we can make connections to try to improve their experience here. And it helps give the administrative team in particular a focus for what do we need to do to help teachers, if they need it, to meet the students' expectations. So, the good news was with the survey, our kids are really happy. They find that they feel successful. More than half of them felt very successful. Seventy-two percent of them felt that school was interesting and that they were happy to be in classes. And so, that was a good part. There are some kids that feel that some of the things they're learning is frustrating to them. I think one student felt you shouldn't have to take math after eighth grade, and I get that. So, there's some kids that are a little bit frustrated with some of their classes, but overall, overwhelmingly, the kids were really happy and very glad to be here and to share their thoughts. Then, we move to the focus group. So, the focus group consisted of thirty-five percent of the freshmen, incoming freshmen. We did it last year as well, and last year was a good way to get us a baseline because the kids that we interviewed last year weren't a part of embedded honors. So, this year, the kids that we interviewed had been experiencing the embedded honors for about two months. And we got a lot of feedback that was very similar to the year before. So, kids talked about things that helped them feel engaged. They talked about overwhelming, the number-one answer was to have experiences in school that would help them later in life. They liked the CAD classes, they liked the PE classes, they felt it was important and ought to stay healthy. So, that was good because now we know what we need to do or keep doing. And then, we asked about, how do you, what makes you feel disengaged, what don't you like? And the good news is, it was nothing as an educator that I hadn't expected. What they didn't like was they don't like teachers who talk all class. They don't like it when they feel confused and the teacher doesn't recognize that they're confused. But that was, honestly, that was the most of it. They don't like it when kids talk too much in class and, you know, it gets distracting. But, for the most part, the things that they weren't, that made them feel disengaged, I think, are things that I can bring back to the teachers and we can make adjustments for. And frankly, those are things that through embedded honors, we're already starting to make those adjustments, like working with small groups of kids. If you, if they need to come and have an intervention right now in our intervention room, you know, sign them up for that. We have a late policy, you know, some kids admittedly were not used to the idea that if you fail a class, you actually have to take it again now because with high school, all the classes are separate. So, just, we've put some things in place for that. But all in all, I was really happy. We have a happy group of kids, very talkative group of kids. And the response to the survey, I mean, it was ninety-seven, the survey was ninety, no, it was ninety-seven percent, not eighty-seven percent. So, yeah, so that's the synopsis of it. I'm always happy to answer questions if you have them, if you need more details.
And you have a copy of this in your board report to take a look at. So, moving forward, one of the conversations that we've had was, do we do this again sometime in like May to kind of see now that they've had a year under their belt in terms of this process, right? So that, are they looking at the experiences, is it too soon in their high school experience to have some of those questions and conversations like that? And do we wait until May to really give them that full year? Are they drawing on things from maybe from where they were at either ACS or DES? So, some things that we're going to talk about as we move forward with that, so.
Are there any questions related to, like, if a child wants to receive honors credit, if they feel like they're achieving that level in that class?
So, there aren't any, there are no specific questions saying, like, do you know how to achieve it, or are you nervous about not being able to? Really, most of those questions would have been about asking them what their best experiences were and what some of their difficult things are. So, nothing for the kids directly, but answers that we can take and, you know, make assumptions and connections to the survey to see what we need to do. So, not in this, yes, kids have talked about that, not in this format though, or during these groups.
Has the mission statement or the vision of a graduate been backed up against this compared to this?
That's a great question. I want to say yes. So, yes, that was in our minds, but mostly what we'll do is we'll take what they say and see how it fits in the vision and see if we're bringing those two things together. But, yeah, I mean, when we asked them about their academics, the, some of the prompts were about being successful, talking about the future, talking about community. Yes. So, yes.
So, a lot of the survey questions, or all the survey questions, Mr. Fuller, are from the new teacher project. So, it was a canned survey that we used based off of the new teacher project that had the questions which are in the board packet. What are the barriers to high expectations for students? How can schools catch up when students have fallen behind? So, the questions were based around that piece of it. I think what I think I'm hearing from some of you is that we might want to add in some questions around the idea of personalized education. Do they feel like they understand what the expectations are within the classrooms as well?
Yeah, I think it's more than just, I think there's the expectation piece, but then it's also, some of these feel, like, I don't know. If I was a student that wants to be challenged and have that honors, I'm not sure in the way these questions were asked if I find a place to put that. So, I might be having a good experience in learning English, but if you asked me, would you have preferred to be able to read, like, or have more in-depth conversation or whatever, like, just a higher-level English than your current option?
I see what you're saying.
Would you prefer that? Because I guess what I'm getting at is, I understand the benefits for the child that's not looking for the honors, but is the child that's looking for the honors getting what they would expect in an honors level class?
Great. Yeah, I understand your question now. Thank you for explaining that. Yeah, that is interesting. And to echo Matt, we weren't that specific, but I think you've given us something to think about.
You know, it's not a question for everyone, right? And that's why I said kind of the two-tier, like, if you're looking for an honors-level experience, like, check yes and then answer the next question below. If you're not, it's not relevant, right?
Yes.
But I think if that's what they're looking for, are they getting that? And how are they getting that? Because that's what I'm hearing from parents too, is that they're not sure that their child is necessarily getting that same level of instruction that they would be getting had they been in an honors class.
I definitely think that there's like some merit to that because I know since I'm, you know, not a freshman, I haven't had like the embedded honors experience in like the traditional sense. But, for example, like, my physics class is like half CPL and half honors, and I definitely think that that has affected like mine and other students who would have been in the honors class, like, ability to learn and understand the material. Because aside from like the course content, I think that there's a very, like, there's a very big contrast between the behavior aspects of like a CP and an honors student. And I definitely think that can be inhibiting to like honors students who don't learn that, especially for at least freshmen because, you know, they're so young and naive and like still getting used to that high school experience. I definitely think that that could affect their ability to learn and how they're retaining the information after the class.
Fair enough. I don't want to.
We can work on, we can work on maybe teasing out some questions along those lines. Again, I think one of the things that we're talking about at the administrative level is, do we want to do it again in May? And if we are, then we can kind of tease out some of those questions and keep it so that it aligns to what we're trying to do with the mission and vision and all that stuff, so, absolutely.
The students that are in these classes, they all have the ability to be an honors student, correct? Do you have an idea of how many students now that the semester's closed, like, how many of those students achieve that?
Yeah, I don't have that data with me, but because the quarter just closed, so in December, we'll bring some of that information forward with.
Yeah, and then percentage-wise, is that similar to what we were experiencing in other classes?
You know, I want to point out that with the adoption, especially in math and in science, the level of rigor across the board, if you ask any child, the level of rigor has grown exponentially. It's really challenging all of our students across the board, it's challenging our teachers as well. And each, you know, each unit, as you can see in this thing, they're feeling better about the content of it and getting better at engaging the kids in that piece of it. So, you know, again, I can't speak for what kids are feeling, but I can tell you that in conversations with David and Kristen, that there is that, kids are talking about the fact that it's much more difficult than what they thought, and that's across the board, so.
Matt, that's, one of the things I was concerned about at last meeting, we were talking about students dropping one of the classes to take VELAX. And I'm concerned that, you just mentioned rigor, and I'm concerned that rather than face the rigor and the gravity, which are important parts of our graduation, expectations of a student, that they're doing that. And how are we handling that?
Yeah, so I don't, I mean, Dave, you might be able to answer this question better than I. I think the increase in some of the VELAX classes weren't necessarily specific to rigor, but more that they weren't happy with a particular teacher, or they didn't want to go this route or that route. You know, you can jump in on that a little bit better than I can, but.
But is that a life skill we should be teaching?
Right, well.
I mean, you know, sometimes you've got to suck it up.
They can take.
We should be teaching that too, you know?
And the idea is that, you know, we do allow that, we do allow students, right, to take classes that aren't just here at Prospect Mountain, which is, part of that is VELAX, right?
Yeah, that I understand, but if we offer it, my expectation is they would take it here, not bail out because the rigor's too much.
Then, yeah, but that's a hard thing to subjectify.
I mean, there's, when you think about it, I get what you're saying, and I think there is merit to that, and, you know, obviously, that is a life skill we want our students to learn, but like, how do you go about stopping that? Like, we can't just force them, like, to take the class here if they would rather take it online. I mean, also, I think that's a very multifaceted situation because, for example, you could just, you know, not have connections with all of your classmates, or you don't like the teacher for whatever reason and you want to take it online. I feel like if we view it as just, oh, they couldn't handle it, I mean, that doesn't really make sense because whether you take geometry honors online or in person, it's usually going to be a similar amount of work.
So, go ahead, I was just going to.
Well, I just, I think because this conversation has gone to this place, the board recently asked me to consult with legal counsel and talk specifically in the context of our graduation requirements and early graduation requests. You know, what remains in the authority of the local school board in the context of the state regulatory and legal scheme that's allowing Learn Everywhere and VELAX and dual enrollment and high school credit for going to NHTI and things like that? And the answer is not as much as you might want. You know, under the Learn Everywhere program, a student who goes and takes martial arts lessons at a certain studio in Concord will receive high school credit. Not May, not it's up to the local board to decide. Under this law, the State Board of Education has determined that those credits must be transcripted by public schools in New Hampshire. So, it's not up to us. Students may enroll in VELAX, it is a public charter school, and they may enroll there full-time, or they may take a class or two, and they can take whatever they want. So, you're a school board, you can pass whatever policy you want to, but any decision of a local board can be appealed by a family to the State Board of Education. And what I'm trying to convey is what's likely to happen at that level if we try to create local policy that sort of butts up against this regulatory scheme. What the legislature and the Department of Ed and the State Board have been very clear about over the last, I would even say, decade, is they want families to have more choices. I mean, we've, in some ways, we've been sort of a part of that in the last few years in trying to do that for our kids here at this school. So, this is one of the things we run up against. If a student can choose, I'm going to take an English class on VELAX, and I'm going to go take an extra credit over the summer at a community college or whatever it is, and I can meet your graduation requirements in three years instead of four, there's little a board is left to be able to do about that other than say congratulations.
So, they ought not to be applying to us for early graduation, they ought to just do it?
I mean, we do have policy, I totally appreciate the point, we do have policy that says if you want to graduate in time shorter than four years, you you need to apply to the board. Um, but I think the question to me, that just seemed to fit into the, the answer seemed to fit into this conversation, did it not, um, was, what's the board to do in these cases? I mean, we, we ask the students for a plan, we want to know what they're, what they're headed off to do next, what their reasoning is, um, I know our counseling staff talk to kids about, are you sure, do you want to stay and take some electives, you know, we do have these other things to offer, but at the end of the day, we're working in, you know, we're, we're a public institution in a state where the public, the government wants these options to be available for families.
If we're not satisfied with their application, and we do deny it, I guess if it gets appealed, we'd, we'd probably not win.
I, I can predict that it would be difficult.
So just two more things and I'll get out of your ear. Um, so I, I did mention that next month we'll bring in the data from first quarter and how the grades went there. The other piece, uh, one of the other concerns that was expressed was behavior, um, and so I included, again, this is very early data, right, we're talking about September and October, um, but you can see, uh, the data from, from last year and this year, um, September was the same, uh, for, again, two different cohorts, but again, still ninth graders. Uh, last year there were thirty-seven incidences in the month of October compared to twenty-two this year, um, so at least in the first two months, there is a decline.
The color code on the bottom's wrong, just for-
Is it all, oh? My apologies.
Right.
Yep.
That's what I thought when I looked at the data, but just to not confuse people.
Yep.
Because when you look at the breakdown, it is nine and nine, but, so gray is September.
My apologies.
Right? That's okay.
Yes.
Just to clarify.
Better color code better. Um, and so the last piece I just want to bring to you, um, is ED Law 306. Again, um, I want to, each month, kind of bring some things to you so that you're, you're aware of the changes that are, are coming. Um, one of the things that I've been doing along with the school counseling department is meeting with the departments that are going to be mostly impacted by this. So what you see in the left-hand column is what we currently offer here at Prospect Mountain High School, uh, the changes in the ED Law 306 is in the middle, and then this is sort of our tentative, uh, approach, uh, going into twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, we're still working through some things with each of the departments, uh, but you can see that, uh, one of the things that ED Law says is that, uh, no longer do you need four credits in English, uh, it's three and a half, which includes writing, but we're sticking with the four credits, um, and one of the things that we're looking at, working on, is the logic in rhetoric, which is a requirement, uh, having that as part of our fourth English credit. Uh, social studies is increasing by four and a half, um, we've, we're going to realign some of when they are taught, um, the good part about it is, is that, um, we're not having to go back and redo things that we've already done, it's just a matter of continuing our prog, uh, progression, but also making sure that we know what grade level and which part they'll be doing that in. Um, mathematics is, um, going from three, it was four really, but the fourth one was a math experience, uh, and we, they were very liberal with the math experience, um, and, and I mean no, no disrespect to this, but like, family consumer science would count as a math experience, uh, for the fourth math. So now it's three and a half credits, uh, and that extra half credit is stats or data analysis, so we'll be working through, um, with the math department on that, so. So each month I'll bring some of these updates to you, uh, on the different changes to ED Law 306. Again, I want to emphasize that they, the state is pushing to get away from seat time, um, the idea of ninety hours or ninety days in a seat is a half a credit and a hundred and eighty is a full credit, to more of a competency slash standards-based. Uh, that's something that we've already shifted to, and we're continuing to shift on that part of it. Uh, that doesn't mean that grading goes away, I know sometimes when people hear competency-based or standards, that grades aren't attached to that, but we're not in that, that part yet. Uh, we'll have some discussion down the line, I think, about what, what makes sense, uh, because we're still working in a traditional setting in terms of our zero to a hundred percent, so.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Next up, Superintendent Port. Did it make your packets, or is it on the table? Which way did we go, which way did we go? On the table?
I think it was on the table.
Everyone has it except for me.
Yeah, Jim.
Thanks. Uh, so I'm working with Jim O'Shaughnessy, our attorney from Drummond-Woodsom, on warrant articles. You typically would see and vote to recommend warrant articles, um, at your December meetings, but since there are a few, I thought it was important to sort of recap them here while I'm working with, um, Attorney O'Shaughnessy. So if any of you want to, um, talk to me over the next few weeks, you have a chance to do that, so everyone understands what we're, what we're talking about at the December meeting, because that can be tough, right? You come into a meeting, you see something for the first time, and we need a decision, that, that can be unfair, or it can feel unfair to me at least. Um, so first of all, um, and those of you who met with Jim O'Shaughnessy, um, already as part of the Shared Services Committee, to talk about this, no more of the detail, but a warrant article in Alton and in Barnstead to establish an SAU merger study committee. The law requires us to do this before, um, merging or attempting to merge SAUs. Second warrant article, if, um, our attorney decides it's necessary, um, to allow you to accept and expend revenue for the operation of Granite State Academy outside of your regular operating budget appropriations, because typically you're limited, the, a school district can only spend what's appropriated and approved in March, and the way the online school works, you don't know necessarily how many students will come in, how much revenue will come in with them for each student, there's a, an associated expense that comes out of that revenue, so there has to be a revolving fund of some kind that allows that to happen. It may not require a warrant article, but if it does, I want you to be aware, um, that that's one of the, one of the articles you might see, and, and Jim is working on that now. Um, similarly, uh, I've been talking to him about, now that we have seen a Supreme Court decision in October, followed by a State Board of Education decision last week, um, that further upheld RSA 194D, as it is written, um, on open enrollment, and as Heidi reported, um, we received our first, um, age receivable payment today. We just want to make sure that that revenue is being accepted and then appropriated or directed appropriately. If that requires warrant article action, we're, we're going to come with that article as well, and if it doesn't, I'll come with an explanation of why, right, from our lawyer, one way or the other. And then the last one, um, that I have on this list, if any of you can think of anything else that we've talked about, because there's kind of a lot going on here, um, please point it out to me, but I think this is it. The last one is part of your agreement with Stride. Remember, the former name of the company was K-12 Education, and as that name clearly implies, they run these online schools from kindergarten through twelfth grade. We have an open enrollment program that we can use as a mechanism for enrolling students in the Granite State Academy that is run by the JMA, which serves grades seven through twelve. So, part of your agreement with Stride, that we ratified a few months ago, is that the Joint Board will try to take action in Alton and Barnstead to open the online school to grades kindergarten through six. Um, so th, these articles would have to be written to be specific, that we are not talking about turning the elementary schools into open enrollment schools. We are talking about Alton and Barnstead partnering to allow this Granite State Academy that now already exists to enroll students in the online school all the way down to kindergarten. Um, so those are the four articles that Jim and I have been, um, kind of talking about and researching the laws around, um, so that we can draft them and have them ready for you, um, in December. If there's anything else that any of you can think of, or if you want to talk about any of that, please reach out. I'll make a cup of coffee and we can have a lot of fun. Questions there? Yeah, so, so I'm going to have a little more on this actually tomorrow night in Barnstead, because, um, this work has affected the elementary schools, um, more, but this is my chance to talk to all of you at the same time, and for announcement like this, it's nice to do it sort of all at once. Pam McDonald, our Director of Special Education, has notified us that she intends to retire, it is the end of her career, at the end of this year. Um, so she's working through June thirtieth, which is the end of our school and fiscal year. Um, I've included some things that you may not know about Pam here, she earned her bachelor's degree at Notre Dame, she has a master's from University of New Hampshire, um, she's from the North Country and began her career in special education in Northumberland, uh, becoming the spec, Director of Special Education in Somersworth in two thousand and eleven. Eight years later, she came to Alton, and over the last few years has led our efforts to consolidate systems and processes across all three of our schools. She's implemented, most importantly, common service log systems that allow us to document that we are in compliance with federal law, that's very important in special education, um, and it's been difficult to change some habits and behaviors, but she has done it. She has developed training, um, in compliance with federal law for all of our staff, and she has helped correct errors in Medicaid claims practices that at one time resulted in us having to, um, return some money to DHHS, but those days are over. Thank you to Pam, um, in both of our elementary schools. She's done the very difficult work of leading change for us over the last few years, um, with great patience and tremendous grace, and grateful for her service. Matt and I are consulting with her and with Paul Borsch regarding next steps, we'll come to you in December to talk about what we think that should look like and to get your input for tonight. I wanted to leave it at that, um, and ask you to, um, accept Pam's retirement notification with gratitude, um, either now or when you get to motion.
Take a motion.
Make a motion to accept Pam McDonald's retirement, uh, as of six thirty twenty-six with regrets and gratitude.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
With regrets. Thank you. Um, a little bit different, but, um, another change, Sean Asdot, and again, we're at the Joint Board meeting because this affects our lives across the two school districts, makes sense to talk about it right now. Has informed us that he and his wife plan to lease their home for sale January first and to relocate to Florida, um, which is a little, I knew this was coming, but it's a little earlier than I thought, um, but God bless them. Uh, so, this one, we're not going to come to you with a plan in December, we're going to post the job tomorrow, and, um, we'll, uh, we'll get right on it. But I think, I, I know from, uh, our conversations with Sean, that while their house is for sale and they're still around, we're, we're going to be able to keep things going and, and make it all work, so, we'll, we'll work together carefully on this transition. Obviously, we have some pretty big stuff going on, especially over on Maple Street and Center Barnstead.
Yeah.
So, we'll, uh, we'll work it out, we're going to be okay. Um, on the topic of open enrollment, uh, if you read the papers, you don't need me to tell you what's been going on, um, all of a sudden, the state is aware of open enrollment, of the Supreme Court decision, of last week's, um, State Board of Education decision, and now today, Heidi's news that we've received our first age receivable payment. Um, I don't have anything to add to that at the moment unless there are questions, and I understand if there are, because there certainly seems to be a lot going on. Any questions? Good. Um, so, Matt Zofus and I have invited, we do, we've been doing this every year now for a few years, this is our fourth time around, um, we invite our state representatives and senators to come in, have a cup of coffee, talk about what's going on in our schools, and how we think we fit into the context of the legislation in front of them each session and what's going on across the state. I think it's been extremely valuable. It looks like that's going to happen the afternoon of the twenty-fourth. If any of you would care to join us for coffee and conversation, please let me know. This morning, uh, there was an executive session of the Senate Education Committee, and among other things, they voted to move last year's House Bill seven forty-one into interim study, which is a polite way of saying it's probably not going to pass, um, but I think one of the reasons for that is that there are a few new LSRs in this year that address the same topic. House seven forty-one, for any of you who don't recall, was a bill to expand open enrollment across the state, so it would have eliminated the adoption and rescission section of RSA one ninety-four D. So instead of school districts like Alton and Barnstead did four years ago, adopting and bringing the provisions of the RSA into our policy, you wouldn't have to do that anymore. Any board in the state would simply have to establish their capacity and would be an open enrollment school if they wanted to be. That is now currently not the law, that didn't pass last year, it was sent to this committee, this committee decided this morning to establish a study group, um, which seems understandable, considering some of the things that have been going on, um, but it really remains to be seen. We're very early in the legislative session, um, the LSR deadline was in September, um, the last day for co-sponsors to sign on to bills, I think was today or yesterday, um, so, House and Senate committees start getting serious now for the next few months, and you start seeing bills move back and forth from House committees to the Senate and vice versa, January, February, March, and then legislation generally starts to move to the governor's desk, April, May, June, I mean, this is generalization, but it's kind of the schedule that they work on. So it's a great time for us to have something like a legislative meeting to talk to our reps and senators, because they're at the beginning. So they have an idea what they're looking at, we have an idea what's on their plates, and we can point some things out. The, the New Hampshire Legislature considers an incredible amount of legislation every year, thirteen hundred?
Close to fourteen hundred.
Almost fourteen hundred legislative service requests were submitted this year. And just think about the number of days they're going to be in session over the next six months, it's nuts.
It's extremely high, I'm the Legislative Chair for National Association of Accountants, uh, it's extremely high, and they were kind of put out from leadership to, to cut some of them down, which, that also causes another problem, because they're going to add a bill on to another bill, so trying to find where they tacked it on to, um, makes it a little difficult sometimes, and that's how things slip through, um, so this will be very interesting to keep track of everything.
Democracy is messy, and New Hampshire loves democracy. And that's my report.
Any questions over to Superintendent? Uh, actually, yep. Next up on the list is personnel, but there's nothing on personnel.
Yes, there's one.
And no action on personnel tonight?
We did the retirement.
Next up is ours.
And then, we want to make a motion to accept the charitable foundation grant for the music department in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. I need a second. Second. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And then, do you want to make a motion for budget? Heidi? Make a motion to recommend it to the JMA Budget Committee?
Make a motion to recommend the fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven budget.
To the JMA Budget.
To the JMA Budget Committee. Thank you.
Second.
Let me explain what that means.
Sure.
Okay, here's what that means. So, um, according to the terms of the Joint Maintenance Agreement, um, the Joint Board develops a proposed budget which exists and you all have copies of. This budget shows a total increase, um, of four point five six percent after a reduction in food services considered, four point nine two percent prior to that reduction in food service. About three percent of the increase is due to healthcare costs. Um, healthcare, our healthcare increase ended up being about twenty-three percent, um, that's not small.
No.
Uh, that's, that's roughly three hundred thousand dollars in a budget that is up about four hundred ninety thousand dollars. So you've got about three percent of the increase, or more than half of the increase, just for healthcare, and then between one and a half and two percent for everything It goes to, this vote is to recommend this proposed budget to the Joint Budget Committee, which is comprised of three members of the Alton Budget Committee and three- which is comprised of three members of the Alton Budget Committee and three members of the Barnstead Budget Committee, along with one school board representative from Alton and one school board representative from Barnstead, so two of you. It generally meets, or schedules three meetings during December, often only holds two of those three, depending on how well the first one goes. The last of those meetings is a public hearing. And then the Joint Budget Committee is charged with making recommendations to the Joint Board. They do not have the authority to make decisions, they make suggestions to you. And we try to time it, so that's done before your December JMA meeting, so that in December, you've now had this budget, some of you are on the finance committee, you've had it already for a little bit, but all of you now have it. You'll get a month to look at it, you'll get recommendations from the Joint Budget Committee, and then take your actions, if you have any, on this budget at your December meeting. Then it becomes the Joint Board's proposed budget for fiscal twenty-seven. I just, I think that's worth the time, so everyone understands what we're doing. Any other questions?
Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else that we had to action items? Heidi doing this one? So next up is our second public input. Say as before, come to the mic, state your name, and open there.
Kim Pika. Kim Pika, Barnstead resident. Standing up at these board meetings is not easy for me. I'm not someone who enjoys confrontation or public speaking, and I certainly never imagined spending my nights researching educational laws or getting involved in politics. That's not who I am. But when it comes to speaking up for what is right, especially when it involves the treatment of others, I can't stay silent, even if it means stepping outside of my comfort zone. I want to be very clear that I am not placing blame on the school board. You weren't the ones who mistreated staff or escorted people out of buildings, but you are the only ones who can protect us from more harm. So tonight, I want to share a glimpse of what the experience looked like from the inside for many of us. I wish I didn't have to keep going back to my story, but it's the only one I can share. Several years ago, I was completely blindsided by the circumstances surrounding my departure. In my heartbreak and confusion, I tried to find closure the only way I knew how, by writing letters. I wrote to the superintendent and the Director of Special Education. Those letters came from a place of pain, humility, and even gratitude. I thanked them for the opportunity, I even took responsibility for any miscommunication, thinking maybe I had missed something. But looking back, I should never have apologized, because I did nothing wrong. I didn't write those letters hoping to get my job back, I wrote them because I needed to leave on good terms, believing that this was just a misunderstanding, an isolated incident that might help the district grow. What I wasn't expecting was a response that felt dismissive and condescending. Instead of acknowledging the oversights and systematic failures that made it impossible for me to meet the minimum requirements for the position, the response shifted the focus, making it look as though this was about my feelings and insecurities. There was no sincere apology or acceptance of responsibility. Instead, after the humiliation of being walked out of the building, the statements were, "I'm sorry about how that feels to you, and I'm sorry that interaction didn't feel good." At first glance, this letter and those phrases may sound empathetic, but they weren't about accountability, they were about protecting an image. It's the kind of language often used by people in positions of power to maintain control of the narrative, rather than take responsibility for the harm that was caused. Why was I the one penalized for being misled by the administrators who are required to understand education laws? And here's the part that still makes me shake my head. If you think about it, I was told to resign from a position I wasn't even qualified to hold in the first place. You would think that would make me less fireable. I mean, how do you get terminated from a job that the Department of Education says you shouldn't, should have never been allowed to sign a contract for? The truth is, I didn't fail the district, the district failed me, by allowing me to sign a contract that violated state certification requirements, then blaming me when the consequences of their oversight caught up. As I mentioned in my October statement, the superintendent was in direct violation when I signed a contract without holding the proper certification. I'm providing you with copies of those letters, and while you review them, remember that my situation was not unique. I've seen other emails written to former employees, and they reflect the same dismissive tone. The difference between them and me is that I can stand here and speak publicly, many others can't, as they still work in public education. Sadly, more than thirty people, employees left this district. Some of their positions were simply eliminated, some quietly resigned, but others faced situations far worse than mine. And while time has passed since that mass exodus, I need to ask, has anyone truly looked into how those departures were handled? Were you led to believe that some of those positions needed to be eliminated or merged for the good of the district? Did these individuals truly deserve what happened to them? Perhaps some made mistakes, we all do, but were those mistakes significant enough to justify threatening their careers over issues that could have been resolved with a conversation or corrective action plan? Consider the employees who did hold valid New Hampshire certifications, dedicated professionals who gave years, sometimes decades, to this district. If someone like me who didn't hold a valid license could be treated this way, imagine the power they held over those who did. I had nothing to lose, but for them, were their licenses used as leverage? I want to leave you with this. If this is how we treat our staff, what message are we sending to our students? What are we teaching them about integrity, accountability, and empathy? How can we expect them to stand up for what is right if the adults around them are punished for doing the very same thing? When people in positions of power are allowed to monopolize an entire school district, making decisions without transparency, and silencing those who question them, it erodes the moral foundation of the entire school community. Our children are watching. They are learning from how we lead, how we treat one another, and how we respond when things go wrong. I hope that moving forward, this district chooses to model the values we want our students to carry with them as they graduate from Prospect Mountain High School and enter into the world. Many of us may no longer teach within these buildings, but our hearts are with the students and staff who are still here. And my hope is that one day, when our students face moments of hardship and injustice in their own lives, they'll remember that doing what's right doesn't always feel easy or comfortable. And when the time comes, I hope they find the strength to step outside their comfort zones to face injustice head-on. But for tonight, I'm asking this board, what about you? When will you step outside your comfort zone and do what is right? You have a legal duty to act, and since taking action is long overdue, I'd like to help you get started by formally requesting a thirty-day review of the issues I presented tonight, as well as those raised in my previous speech. And while you review why so many people have left this district, ask yourself, were those individuals truly let go for performance reasons, or because they spoke up when something wasn't right? Were some deliberately targeted, their mistakes magnified to justify their removal? And if good people are walked out of our buildings for speaking up, or for simply being human and making mistakes, then those same standards should apply to everyone, including the one in charge. Why hasn't the superintendent been escorted out of the district? I will now begin shifting my focus to address the safety concerns I have for both students and staff at BES. I will see you tomorrow night in Barnstead.
Any other public input? Seeing none, hearing none, closed public input. Future agenda items, charter of public schools, special education, MOUs.
Actually, I have something for you in non-public tonight, as noted below.
GSA launch update. Ongoing legislative, building and grounds.
So we had a building and grounds meeting, we talked about the next one, I think everyone seemed to contend. In December, you'll have an update to the five-year capital plan with a first-year proposal that'll be pending revenue or excess, or however it can be funded.
Plus, we'll have the updates on budget as well for next meeting.
The Joint Budget Committee should be finished, whoever's trying to schedule it with them for your next meeting.
And also anything to add for next meeting, missed?
Warrant articles.
Warrant articles. All right. Any other business to come before the board? The future meeting will be December sixteenth. We will go to non-public and then we'll turn afterwards, so if I'll take a motion to go to non-public.
Make a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety-one dash.